Okay.
What's up, man? I always see you sitting in that spot. I don't know where you are.
Yeah, last time?
Yeah, more than just last time, more than once I've seen you sitting there.
Yes, but it is obviously not enough because...
Well, all I have left now is the last page.
Have the agenda chart.
Well, I think that'd be fine.
What's that say?
They're right there, sweetie.
No, there's only last pages. They don't even know how to use the conversation. You should have called, they didn't call like this. It's not hard.
Yeah, really. This is a block.
Was that supposed to do that?
This is the only one left.
Do a Carol.
That's why it should be rough.
Nobody's got any breakfast.
Well, if you want to look at it.
I don't know, I still...
Do you want to, you want to say anything?
Who are you?
Here. David is here. Alicia is there. Greg? David?
Oh, here.
Russell, would you like to be our indication?
Sweet spirit, we open our hearts to you. And as agents of your love in this place, we acknowledge what our role is. And that is to be representatives of your peace and your love in this place and everywhere we travel. And in your son's presence, saying, Jesus, we say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas right, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Now, just the last page. The Carol's gone, why not?
Play both?
No. We are $800 short on the fireworks. Dana and Greg spoke to QuickBooks today. Can you speak up, please? Dana and Greg spoke to QuickBooks today. Our license is going to be over with this week, so we need to get another... Is it $1,000 more? I don't remember how much.
$1,128.31 cents.
Okay. To have payroll on it, it has to be $1,128 cents more.
The reason is, is because they originally told us payroll would, our payroll would work. And now they're telling us it won't.
Anyway, we're going to do a vote on that tonight because we are going to have to have our QuickBooks. We have...
It's not on the agenda. I'm worried about that, it's not on your agenda.
We are going to be interviewing ladies for secretary. No gentlemen's applied. And this will be on Thursday at 6 o'clock. We do have a gentleman that we are going to try and introduce him and try to get him hired for Parks Works, which we need that desperately. For the ones that did not want their water red, I guess it will be, or you call it, estimate. And so, your bill may be higher or a little bit lower than what it normally is. I don't know which. But anyway, on that, I guess this is about all the mayor announcements I've got. Any questions?
Do you have any?
Yes.
I was just wondering, because you mentioned the QuickBooks and the fireworks kind of were back-to-back. Is, are we like one or the other? Is that what you were meaning, or I just wondered?
No.
Okay, that's okay. Thank you.
You mentioned the QuickBooks expenditure, and you said you were going to vote on that. Is that on the agenda?
No. We're not going to vote on it.
But we do need to discuss it.
Well, here's how, here's how this has got to work. If there's some sort of expenditure emergency that the city has to have, and the city's got to make it, this council can come back in and write about that later on. But I'd have to go through a process to amend the agenda by individual meeting. So if there, if there's a necessary emergency expenditure, somebody's got to think of a possibility to do it, let everybody on this council know. And then it's set either on an emergency agenda, independent of a regular meeting, or it's set on an extra regular meeting. That's the only way I know of doing it.
Actually, I think we were going to try to do it privately. Is that what we had decided?
We had to, we had to host it.
Right. That's what we're planning on doing. The minutes of May 9th. Oh, citizens' comments on what needs to... Right now, we're going to do the police chief's oath of office.
I, Andrew E. Lowen.
I, Andrew E. Lowen.
Do solemnly swear.
Sondly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the officer of the chief of police.
That I will faithfully execute the office duties of the chief of police.
Lord Dona.
Lord Dona.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
I will, to the best of my ability, preserve.
I will, to the best of my ability, preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the constitution of law.
And defend the constitution of law.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Of this day.
Of this day.
So have we got.
So have we got.
I, Andrew E. Lowen.
I, Andrew E. Lowen.
Do solemnly swear.
Sondly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I have not directly or indirectly paid.
That I have not directly, indirectly paid.
Offered, promised to pay.
Offered, promised to pay.
Contribute.
Contribute.
Or promised to contribute.
Or promised to contribute.
Any money.
Any money.
Or things of value.
Or things of value.
Or promise to any public office.
Or promise to any public office.
Or employment.
Or employment.
Forgiving or withholding.
Forgiving or withholding.
A vote of election.
A vote of election.
In which I was elected.
I was elected.
Or as rewarded to secure.
Or rewarded to secure.
My appointment or confirmation.
My appointment or confirmation.
Whenever the case may be, so have me got.
Thank you. You are now our chief of police. Okay, citizens' comments. Leslie, I'll play your first.
I'd like to give my time to Dan.
What was that?
Yeah, excuse me, I know. Jan, we should keep this on going, so, you know. You know, my name's Dan Robertson. My wife and I own the Grand Raper Leather Company. I was y'all's chief of police for almost 10 years. You know, what I can't understand is, I'm wondering how many adults we have here tonight. Really adults, because all I've seen on the internet is children. You know? Somebody didn't let me be on the council again, so that pisses me off. I don't want to be in here no more. You know, they need to throw somebody off and put me on there. I don't want them to read my meters. I don't see anybody in here raising their hand, going, "I'll help." Hell, the city yard out here needs mowing. I know everybody here's got a mower. You know, why don't y'all just show up here early in the morning when it's cool and mow it, instead of whining about it? You got two ladies out there that's on their own, that chose to do this on their own, to read the meters to help the city. What all y'all do about it? You get the mownin', bro? Hell, Russell, did you get out there and help them?
I've cut that lawn four times in the last year.
That's not what I... Did you get out there to help the ladies read the meters?
No, sir.
Why not?
Is this the appropriate forum for this? I don't think it is. Mayor, could you maybe address this for us?
Is this, is this public comment?
If we're going to have cross-competition, I could say a lot.
Like, don't bang at it, mate.
Yes, sir, this is for citizen comments.
And I'm making my comments, right?
Now, for the session with the...
They should get ready and grab that again.
Sir, I'm not done. Wait, wait, wait just a minute. You're done talking to these people. You direct your, your focus to this city council. Because this is exactly what happens. Everybody gets out here and gets all wound up. And the last time I was here, we had a fistfight. So if you've got a comment, you make it to them.
Who won the fight?
I'm not going to tell you. But it wasn't being lost. It wouldn't be that hard. You should be caught, so you turn around or sit down. One of the two, final choice.
This guy's rude, though.
I am.
I am, too. I can assure you, y'all get out here and y'all tried everything y'all can to keep the city going. Y'all done an excellent job. You got people, they ran in here that first night, raced everything on the computer. Hell, they stole toilet paper. Get the gavel and tell them quit that.
I did.
No, you didn't. You just shook a finger.
Anyway, you're not going to know what to do, but go ahead.
Three minutes ago.
You know, they stole all the furniture. Did you follow the death report, sir?
I cannot discuss this with you. And your time is just about up, so you need to finish what you've got to say pretty quick.
Are you going to mess me when I leave up there?
I've got police officers here that might do it.
I saw him. I saw him.
Let's, let's get on with it, come on.
I wish I was telling them everything they fucking accused me of at this point in time.
Y'all done a good job up here. Y'all done a very good job. Jan's got us in the bind of over $3 million. Russell, help.
Were you on the council when that lawn was taken out back in 18? Because you weren't even living here.
I have six minutes, sir.
You don't need to, you got three.
And it's gone. A long time ago. Been done. Done, ding.
Same rules apply to you. Same rules.
Enforce them, please.
Well, I'm trying my best.
Thank you.
Sir, you got 30 seconds. And then please be quiet.
I'm going to sound like I got left.
29 seconds. Come on.
29 seconds. 25 minutes.
But it actually says I can use her three minutes. I want y'all to show me where it says I can use my last three minutes.
Get your...
How, sir? Where, would you show me, please, sir?
Says everybody's got three minutes. You have three minutes. You're using your time up. Here in a minute, the gavel's going to sound, sound, sir. It's going to be the end of your time. So, what have you got to say? You need to say something.
My time's up. For y'all, I'll go down. For nobody else, I will. Not in here. And sir, damn sure not for you.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Dan Crawford.
I just wanted to say that this town and city is divided because this happened and that happened. I'm sick of the side-set people. I don't like you because you're on that side. We all live here. This has caused all of y'all because of the firing of the secretary boom like that. Quarrels, trying to figure out what's going on, how to open the computer. All kinds of garbage going all over the internet is because of all this. All of this. And I've out had it, you know? I'm not on either side. I'm for this city. And I don't think you, as the city council and this mayor, have talked to us about how this is going to affect us. Have you proven that we get enough money without water to pay all our bills? Paperies been here three times, and we have never had access to an open forum with our city. And I don't think that's right. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Is this Mary Davis?
Yes.
Is your husband's husband?
Okay, I'm Mary Davis. And I want to ask if we go with Hickory Creek, if you go. Now, I'm not for it at all, which I already told y'all. I want to know how do we pay the policeman's salary, the city secretary's salary, the phone bill, the electric bill, and all the other bills that we accumulate during the month? How are we going to pay them if Hickory Creek takes over the water? This next question I have, how are we going to get grants to fix these roads?
Of course you have to.
Okay.
I'll talk to you.
Okay, and one last question is, what has happened to the forensic audit?
No, I'm going to talk to you.
Okay.
Ross, you got one?
Yeah, you've been saying it. I wonder if it does me any good to actually say anything, and maybe they've already decided.
Use the mic, please.
Greg Cagle posted information that suggests a vote including all the city's systems users is necessary. The council does not represent system users that live outside the limits. And those system users deserve representation in this process. Will you do the right thing and let the citizens and users of the municipal service vote on this change? If you consider the loss of property taxes that may occur with the loss of leverage, why would a developer agree to be annexed if they get all the municipal benefits without being in the city limits? LaDonia will lose all those tax benefits from new residents. Where is a copy of the standards document referenced in Section 1.4? Why is the promised rate freeze not included in the agreement? Why are tower rental fees that were promised to LaDonia not included in the agreement? Why is the no interest in surface water not included? And some questions that I'd like you to consider for Hickory Creek. Law Supply Division document GIO 43 dated October 2019 states "The districts have the power to levy taxes by seeking voter approval to issue unlimited tax bonds." If you're assuming that we're making a switch that will eliminate that, how does that information change your understanding of what might happen in the future? Are any current council members either current or former employees or contractors of Hickory Creek? The water and sewer system has value, as documented in the assets and equity portion of the financial statements. Why are there no other interested parties for acquisition of the water sewer assets? And things that I need, that I believe need to be added to the document, restrictions on Hickory Creek employment or contracting of LaDonia officials, the mayor and council, involved in this decision and their relatives. We should not be putting Hickory Creek in here so that they can hire y'all to go to work for them. And an accounting and valuation of the real estate assets that are to be transferred. That system has value. There is money in that account that is listed as an asset, and the agreement says they get all the assets. So is this council prepared, handed to Hickory Creek, half a million dollars, to take something that has millions of dollars of value? That is insane. Thank you.
Mr. Egan?
Thank you for giving me a little bit of time tonight. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I like some things that I've been...
I can't hear.
Can you hear me okay?
No.
There we go. All right, sorry. So, I don't live inside the city limits. I don't know enough about Hickory Creek or the decisions being made. So I would like some opportunity to have representation, since I'm not in the city, and understand better what's going on. I sent an email to the new email address asking for all the city councils' contact information so that I might be able to communicate with them and ask them questions and try and understand their perspective as well, so that I could better understand the, what's happening and ask some questions, too, like may have been asked, like how are we going to pay for things? And those kind of things as well. I think that things have happened in the past, things are happening now. We're in a situation that we're in. And I hope that somehow we can find a way that we can work together, we can be patient with each other, so that we can work together to find a really good situation and a solution so that we can, together, make a better community and a better place for us to live, for our, for our children to live, and for people to come and visit. We want and we need people to come to our little town so that we can, we can do some things. So, thank you.
Okay, we're going to talk about the minutes of May 9th and 15th. We're going to talk about the minutes of May 9th and 15th. Is there any questions or discussions? Do I have any questions or any discussions on it? I was referring to the council.
Yes, I have a question. Who is Hickory Creek? The rest of the party's not coming up there, I'm in a chair. I offered to help your suite when I ran it back in the 1900s with Gerald Hyde. And I told you then what was wrong with your water, you want to talk.
You can't talk now, but I'd be glad to speak to you afterwards. Jan, do you have any questions or discussions?
I'm going over them because I, they were in the packets. I'm trying to make sure.
There's some questions. It was intentional. Would we be able to do these meetings on the next? Meeting on the next agenda, so we have time to go over them. Speak in your mic, please. Yes, I was asking if we could maybe just include these on the next month's agenda so we have time to go over them and make sure they're correct, instead of taking up time this evening. Something that went in our packet?
They weren't in the packet.
No.
No, they were here.
Oh, they were here. I'm sorry. I make an emotion to hold off on approving the minutes, probably until the next city council meeting. You specific? Do I have a second?
I second, um, wanting to the next city council meeting to approve or disapprove the minutes of May 9th and 15th. So everybody have time to go over them.
Okay, financial report for May 23rd.
They tabled, they tabled it. There again, it wasn't included in our packet. To go over it is, I can make a motion, please, to table the financial report for May 23rd until the next meeting.
Any seconds? Do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
No?
She's the toll breaker?
No.
I will vote yes, so that y'all will have time to go over it. Councils payable for June?
There again, would be an issue for me to table the accounts payable for June of 2023 since they weren't included in our packet.
Do I have a second, please? Do I have a second?
Are all these regular monthly charges?
Yes. I don't have a second?
There's no second. Madam Mayor, the motion dies for lack of a second. You're still back to that agenda item. Wait for something to happen. Somebody gotta make a motion, or we're just gonna sit on top of it.
Make a motion, we approve the council payable for June 2023.
Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor? No. Okay, I need information reports next, Utility Public Works Department.
Highway 64, 505, is repaired. 207 Church Street, called them out, no leak, charged for eight hours. Common Street's fixed. 262 County Road 3645 was on the customer side. And I'm sure we were charged for that, or will be charged for that. It just depends on what it is. It's eight hours for a leak check. So it charges the whole day if they come out and check for a leak. Well 2 is still lending a loan. The fourth major is still not working, as far as we know. We're not getting a whole lot of information from Patterson. I spoke with someone with Patterson back on 510 about that, when we had the boiler water notice. They said they were looking at it at the same time, but never gave us a answer as to what was gonna be done about it. Highway 50 has been low water pressure, I believe is at risk, or down somewhere. Anyway, Philip Burnett, Highway 50, has been low water pressure, 30 pounds for, since 59, still not fixed. They say they can't find the flush valve, even though they worked for us for several years. And Common Street's leak went on for three weeks, where it got repaired. So we're told we need to report to them every Monday, while this, and they will get to us as quick as they can. But we're not getting a good response from Patterson.
Volunteer Fire Department. I did not receive the reports, so. I asked for them, but I didn't.
Do we still have a fire department?
Yeah, they're over there right now.
They're meeting right now.
They're meeting right now. Yeah, there's ten cars over there.
Next, Administration Department. We have been working as hard as we can, trying to get the city up and running like it should be. We are, got four interviews with ladies for the secretary job, and one interview for January to do the public works. Okay, old business, United Rents floating for vacuum pump or sewer pump.
I make a motion, we take no action on that.
Do I have a second?
All second?
Okay, all in favor? Jan?
Aye.
New business, Spirits of Texas Simon's Maintenance Authorization.
What is it? It's not on packet, please.
It's not in there?
It's not?
I've done what it is.
We have got to make. Give us your mic, please. We have, need to make a payment to them, and we cannot do it as much, until we have it authorized from the council.
It wasn't on the previous account's paper.
It's a yearly payment that we need to make as soon as possible.
Was it on June account's paper?
It should have been on May. It's not on June, because we put it on the agenda.
Was it on May's account's paper?
No, that's what I'm saying. It was not on May's, May's account's paper.
That's why we couldn't pay it. It should have been.
Well, that's why. That's why we put it on the agenda, so we could get it paid, you know, immediately.
How much? I can tell you how much it is.
How much is it?
We need the exact amount if we can.
Dana has gone to get the exact amount that we owe.
And it's due by when?
Yeah.
Two months ago.
But really, she'll go on, right?
Yeah.
I think so.
We owe $6,924.83 to Simon's Bank.
I hear you.
We owe $6,924.83 to Simon's Bank. I have a motion.
I make a motion, we pay Simon, Simon, whoever it is, bank, because it's well past due.
Any seconds?
One second, the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Aye.
Thank you. Hickory Creek Asset Transfer Agreement. Do we have a discussion?
So what is this, to transfer water over to?
It is an agreement that we will, we will transfer the water. It's not transferring the water tonight.
Well, due to us not having any of this until tonight, I can't honestly make a vote on this.
You were actually the one that hit and handed.
I didn't have.
Doesn't matter who.
Oh, well, yes, I did have that. There's no problems. I think, and I want more discussion from Hickory Creek. I also personally think we need to have discussion with Upper Trinity. Y'all may or may not think so, but I personally do. I think they could answer some questions. There again, that goes back to being childish, and you need to let bygones be bygones, and let Upper Trinity have their say.
Thank you.
Hey, everyone, I sent an email over here on the 20th of June, where I kind of evaluated what's in the county. Has everybody had that?
No, sir, I was at the hospital, so I did not have your evaluation.
Well, that's part of the problem. We need, everybody needs to get an email address, even if it's at Google, or Yahoo, or something, because it's really difficult for me to text, and then email, and then ask people to give it to everybody else. So, please, get an email address, and let me know what it is, so that I can send you whatever it is I need to send you. Because I can send it out on the 20th, but if you don't get it until tonight, it's not doing us much good.
I did get it, but I was, and I see you and my husband, so I'm not, this is not mine.
Sure, sure, sure. Well, that's the first step. We gotta, you've gotta get stuff from me, and then I gotta get feedback from you, so.
Certainly, that's my motion.
I second your motion.
What are your motion, Madam?
Yes, because citizens would like more information. I agree with Mr. Egan. I think the people that are not inside the C-Winners should get their say so, because they make the work, they're all on.
This is our citizens.
Yeah, I think it's not just, it's not affecting just the citizens of Ladonia, it's affecting the outside. Nothing in Hickory Creek, that's just the way I feel. And I believe in letting everybody have their say. I've always been that way. Yeah, I told you, it's okay.
Do I have a second?
Jan, second?
No, wait, yes, she can.
Oh, second, DeShaw, yes.
I wanna make sure that I'm not, because I am not for this. I'll make it very clear.
All right, let me have a vote.
Do I have, do I have room to say anything here, while we talk about Hickory Creek?
Yeah, I mean, the motion's been made, you can say.
You can still have discussion.
Okay, what I feel to be the most important thing to the health of the city that is not being talked about or considered is the potential loss in the city's property taxes if this contract is approved. This will apply to the development of the property, current, not in the city limits, but within our CCN area, service area. Our only source of revenue to improve our roads are the, are the property taxes that are due to the new development that could be annexed into the city. With the city currently being the water and sewer provider, that gives us leverage. Understand that word, leverage, in negotiating with future developers, in agreeing to annex into the city, along with providing services. That then brings the increased property values and associated taxes into our city. If Hickory Creek was to take over, providing this service, providing this service, there's absolutely no motivation for them to encourage annexation, and the city will be left out in the cold. That will then substantially limit our tax growth associated with the lake and from the new development, and put all the burden on those currently in the city to fund repairs from the increased traffic by others. For those that are not fans of the late coming, this is absolutely the worst thing the city could do. The lake is coming, got news for you, the lake is coming, but at least the city will be, will get more taxes with the growth if we are providing water and annex the development coming along with the lake. But if Hickory Creek is providing services, the city will get none of the benefits and only the increased activity. As a sub, Hickory Creek also has taxing authority like the school district. They can tax the service area, even in unincorporated area. This would further increase all of our taxes, and this would go to them and not our city. While all this has been going on, Upper Trinity was kicking off a self-funded study regarding the water and wastewater needs of the area. They are doing this to determine if it could be viable to provide treated lake water for the area. They have recently made changes to their pipeline design to substantially reduce the potential cost for the treatment plant, saving many millions of dollars. I feel it is best for the city to slow down and allow time for this study to be complete, and at least have option on the table to consider. This could also bring better water to the area, especially when the result of the study may include a finding that Upper Trinity may propose to invite Ladonia to join as a member, and then provide higher quality processed surface water to our city. From my reading of the contract, it is mostly boilerplate legal contract with the name charged from other contracts. The missing details specific to Ladonia that were promised, including freezing rates for two years, actively pursuing grants for installation of cooling lower tower, I'm sorry, installation of backflow prevention, and smart meters at no cost, reference to directly exclude lake surface water rides, since they cannot be done without approval of Upper Trinity, reference the water tower ownership and revenue from rental to the cell towers, reference to transfer of water and sewer bank balances of Hickory Creek, which said when merging others in pass, none had any cash balances to bring along. With Ladonia have elected, oh, I'm sorry, will Ladonia, which this is really important, folks, will Ladonia have elected board seat? Otherwise, we have no say in our own rates, and I am guessing that Hickory Creek is not aware that Upper Trinity is to get $500 from every new installed meter. Just one example, Hickory Creek, not being familiar with local items, is when they stated that all new developments would be on city sewer. They do not have control of that, especially when the Lake Zoning Commission is considering allowing septic for all development. Another important item among the stone books, another important item as a seller and buyer should be the results of Hickory Creek due diligence in doing an assessment of the system. If complete, provide a list of all improvements that will be done in the first two years at their cost, and the impact accumulated expenses on rates after. at their cost and the impact accumulated expenses on rates after a two-year rate freeze. If they have not already done that and they are taking things as is with no warranty as referenced contract, then how could they make reasonable assurance about rates that they will need? That's all I've got to say. Other than that, I did check with some of these cities and I do know that Hickory Creek says they represent and they do not represent.
I got some discussion. We did meet with Upper Trinity and it was just discussion, wasn't a official meeting, but it was a meeting. And they totally denied that they would have anything to do with a water treatment plan. As far as the development goes, there are several developers that will not come in here if we don't improve the water system. And we don't have the means to do that. Property tax, you say we'll, we're going to lose all this property tax? Well, we're going to increase the property tax if we annex this, these developments in, we will get that property tax. So that's when increase our property taxes. And Hickory Creek's already let us know that their, their major plans on is going to be improving the infrastructure. I mean, it's kind of one of those deals, if they don't, they're going, it's going to be a cost factor for them. It's going to be a major cost factor for them if they don't start improving it. So we have had four meetings now and I think it's kind of, everybody's had a say. They were public meetings, workshops and.
I went with them. I myself, I myself went out there and spoke to them and that is not what all they told me.
When we were sitting at that table and I asked Patterson.
What was the day that ribbon cut?
No, 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 I'm talking about, this is way back. When we went on, when they asked us to come over there and meet with them and we had cookies and water.
When Sonny and there were several people there.
No, there was, only, only one was there.
Sonny was there, yeah. East side.
No, 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 no. I'm not talking about that one. Then you were there, Patterson and.
Across the street, that's the only one I was at. It's when the east side guy came over. Well, we can argue all you want to, but I am not bringing.
Okay, I mean, we were there, you were there, Mayor was there, you were there and I was there, we talked to Patterson and I suggested to them to go into a joint venture or whatever with, with putting in a, a water treatment plant. And they said, oh, because he suggested first. I said, hey, that'd be a good idea. And he said, well, y'all need to do that on your own. And that was a quote from Patterson.
And he also said that a vermin's for me to be a minister. And that's why.
I don't know, I got it and left after that because I don't hear it very much.
So even regarding all of this, why the rush? And at a minimum, why not ask Hickory Creek just to take over maintenance like Patterson's doing repairs for a period of time so we could see, you know, to trial?
I don't think they're maintenance company.
Well, if they come in, if the lines, then it's making myself.
They would have the lines, they would be responsible for them then. Big difference.
Why is it they can't come in initially like it was stated to do what Patterson was doing for itself?
They said they would if we agreed to.
No, 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 yeah.
Okay.
People, they need a right to vote on this.
Yes.
We want to vote. It's not a show. I'm trying to make sure that these people, if y'all been looking at anything, they have a right.
That's right. It's not a show.
It's not a show.
Well, I also had a meeting with Janeway the last week at school in our suburban, at school. And the things he was telling me was that we would pay for it. And they had, they had found out, we had talked to Hickory Creek, so they came, they as Janeway came and wanted to have a talk with me and wanted to see how I felt about it. And what he said was they would do this stuff now. Now, I find it odd that they never offered, in fact, they had an emergency meeting, he said, to talk to their board members to do things that Ladonia needed. He said he had no idea Ladonia was in bad shape like it is, you know, and that they would be willing to do that. Now, was it put in writing? Has he said it again? No, you know. And the thing of it is, I know that it's awful interesting to me to sit back and watch all the dislike and untrust Upper Trinity had before Hickory Creek came in to the subject and now it's right reversed. The love of Upper Trinity is just overwhelming and of course Hickory Creek is all wrong.
Well, I will, don't mean to interrupt, but having con. Okay.
Anyway, I think that if we are going to have a talk, I would like to do it this way. I would like Upper Trinity to put everything they're promising to a view in writing. Same thing with Hickory Creek. I want it in writing. And I think.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
But we, we have what Hickory Creek wants right there.
Well, I understand that, but I do believe, I, I know that Hickory Creek made a comment to me that they are putting in two wells, two wells, Hickory Creek wants the two wells, but they're putting in two pumps or something right there at the end of the dam. And they want to give us the, what's that Hickory Creek?
Not Hickory Creek.
Not Hickory, Upper Trinity, I'm sorry. Anyway, they want by the dam to bring those big pipes that move water and put it over here to the edge of the property that they're renting for less. They said that they would put another pump there, but it would be the city's responsibility to take the, and put the rest of the pipes in to go past the sewerage plant. And for the life of me, I have no idea what, why we want it or what it's needed for. And I asked them and I did not get an answer that day, but maybe they'll give us an answer if they fill out paperwork. But I, he did tell me that those pipes will cost us a lot of money, that these are awful big pipes. And he, they want to make sure that we will never sell that piece of property over there that the city owns, I believe is 90, 100 acres, something like that. They do not want us to ever sell that property if they do this. Don't shake your head, you weren't at the meeting, you know. So anyway, that's why I say that I believe that if we are going to pit Upper Trinity against Hickory Creek, the only way to do it fairly is have both of them here at the same time, have both of them here telling us what they will and will not do and be done with it. But if Hickory Creek decides, hey, we're tired of fooling the people in Ladonia. I want the Ladonia citizens here to tell me where we're getting the money to pay all these bills that we've got, which by the way, a lot of them hasn't been paid for in three months. So if anybody has an idea where we're going to get the money to fix the well too, since Patterson's known about it for about three months and hadn't done nothing to it, I would like to know.
The only other comment I have regarding Hickory Creek is when I checked on, and I think it just said a while ago, maybe repeating myself. There are several of the cities that they said they represent and they do not. And that really bothers me that we were given all that information and to find out that they don't have those cities.
What cities are they?
Caddo Mills, we'll see, Alton, Lennar, Long City.
I'm the instructor and I'm a shithead in Spain. And after 1997, I offered your city my help and they told me they didn't need it. You got a double layout for the four miles from down. If you have questions, they got these answers.
You may talk to me after the meeting.
There's already a motion on, on the floor, the discussion's expired, I suggest you call for a vote.
You want to vote?
Yeah.
All in favor of the motion?
Okay, it's a tie. I'm going to vote. Yes.
Thank you.
Ah, or no?
So the most.
Wait, hold on.
No, I'm not voting the table. I'll vote a little bit. Uh, you have the opportunity and the citizens want Hickory Creek to come in and hear from Upper Trinity also instead of just.
Need to be fair to this community right here and just in the end of this.
Yeah, that, that was my motion.
So will you make the motion? Would you make it and let her do it again? I don't think we need to pay.
It wasn't the table, we wanted to hear from both sides.
But you're effectively tied to your.
Citizens have a right.
Yes, Hickory Creek to come in and this will be, okay, Hickory Creek saying no, so are you done with Ladonia?
We want to vote tonight.
No.
Nope. Don't you dare.
This, this horse has already been ridden. It's done.
Say, use the mic.
Mr. Hamilton, could you repeat that so we could hear?
The motion's already been made and passed. This agenda item is dead tonight.
And so could you recap what happened because there was so much confusion? I couldn't follow it.
Hold on, look, look. If we're ever going to, look, I said this the last time I was here. We've been here since eight o'clock and we've got one thing done on the agenda. And part of it is because of this and part of it's because of this. We're going to have to learn to play together in the same sandbox. And this, I'll tell you what, and I'll, I'm going to tell the city council this, pretty soon, the, the, hold on, pretty soon, the expansion that you're going to get because of these lakes is going to outstrip your ability to govern. And it's catching up faster than you can imagine. I have, I've been involved in government for 50 years. I have never seen people have a fight in a city council meeting before, ever, ever. But there's a process, you just don't stand up in court and say things either. You just don't do it, okay? So that's what this has to be. There has to be some order in this or not going to get things done. And I know that everybody here wants to talk, the time to do it is right there at the citizen comments. It is against the law for these people to respond to you when you make those comments. I didn't write the law. They pay me to tell them what it is. They can't talk to you then. They would be breaking the Open Meetings Act. They can't do it. Now, they can take your stuff into consideration on the agenda. Pardon me?
There's no trust here and there's no open forums. There's no information.
I think, and what just happened, that was a question, what's happened? This agenda item is over with for the night. What's happened is there's, I guess there's going to be an invitation for Hickory Creek and Upper Trinity to come over here and spill their guts sometime next, next month or whenever they meet again. That's what, that's what I understood happened. Okay?
People need to be off their phones up there too.
That has nothing to do, there is absolutely nothing to say that you can't be on your phone.
We are going into closed session now.
What agenda items are the, the man and mayor that we're going to go into closed session?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I had to stand up and I got in trouble.
Well, if you're chasing, well, that's, I mean, as far as.
Is there an ordinance that says, that's, any state limits?
I was talking to the T-Cock and they said they agree, but they, that's us. But I always understood this, it could be taken home or whatever.
There's, there's not requirement, in fact, many of the smaller cities who have officers, those officers don't live inside town. They live in an adjoining place. So one of the perks is you take the police car home. If it's a police car, it's not a taxable issue for the employee. That means that employee does not have to report that car as income, but it is strictly a decision of the city whether or not to allow that police car to be taken home by anybody. There's, there's no other restrictions on it.
Sorry, in the past, we've let them here.
Is there any distinctions on that? What happens though? Okay, do I have a vote on that?
Mr. Hamilton, could you catch?
I'd like to make a motion that police car remain in the city.
Something's good.
No seconds?
Make a motion that we allow the police chief to drive the, drive the police car home that.
Eighty seconds on that.
May we even ask where he lives?
Well, I do know, or we have allowed a city worker to do that. All right, let's have a vote.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, council policy, rule regulations, and...
Mr. Hamilton, what happened to, uh, Adam here?
Obligations.
I'm sorry, Adam Seaman, we don't...
Is Adam Seaman gonna be, uh, an executive session item, item here? Yes. Okay, so we're trying to get through all the open sessions?
Yes, we can go in close, yes, yes. Do I have, uh, any discussion on E?
I have some discussion, but it's legal advice to the council, so I'd like for that discussion to be in executive session.
Okay, we're gonna convene in a closed session.
So they skipped C, because they're gonna do that in closed session, now they're gonna do E, of course. Sherry. Sherry Howell.
It's eight ten.
Yeah. It's nice to put a face and a name together. They're the nicest people. On the corner, thirty-four six people. Sixty-four, but there was just, just a weird day, they just lived. Yeah. It looks like holy hell right now. Our tractor and our lawnmower broke, it's so neat, and this Brian ordered parts, and when the parts came, they were the wrong parts, so we had to order them again. So we picked Johnny Crosby to come and tow. He can like to break the jungle, and with all this rain. So, Charles. How long have you been here? Ten years.
This is the craziest city council meeting.
Well, keep coming. The entertainment is only for passersby. I know that's possible, and so the first, the first meeting, the mayor was, uh, when she was elected, she said, "We're not gonna use that." And I said, "What kind of procedure are you gonna give?" Anyway, so you know, every time somebody makes a motion in seconds, and they have discussion, she's required to leave the motion back. And I don't know if we saw, have a second, huh?
Do you, do you guys have any questions for me?
I mean, are we not gonna have another officer? If you're driving the only vehicle we have? So we just bear a list, and we bear, that, that car is not, let's be honest.
Well, and that's one of the things...
So are you driving the car, or are you driving the expedition, the green expedition? Hi, who are you? Hi Cheryl.
One of the things I'm gonna do is get him up in front.
They've been sitting for almost a year. And they were running his spots, I mean, you know, I'm sorry, everybody can say what they want about...
You look at the financial statements, it tells you what the value that, that is worth, is worth millions of dollars.
We are glad to have somebody.
Somebody ought to be willing to come in here.
They will, they certainly are coming here, they'll pay today, they're doing, they're running around bottom right now.
But that's the heart of what Jan was talking about, is if we guys lose our water department, we, we lose the ability to say, if you wanna be have on the water system, you have to be annexed into the city.
I didn't see y'all back there.
I guarantee they're not gonna, they're not gonna come here and say, "No, they're not." They're gonna come here because they like, definitely whatever they got to fix the water.
My have to do is, you probably, you know, when we moved here, you could get one for a thousand dollars. You can get one for twenty-five grand.
Yeah. No, you can't. It's only gonna blow up over here.
Okay, that's like...
All right, that's not, makes you do good.
Carol, can you, can you take a Ladonia check that? I'll tell you what the memo needs to say.
It's nine ten, and, uh, we will be back in session.
What was that?
Uh, C, C. We're hiring, uh, hiring a utility department employee. Normally, we pick someone that's gonna discuss it, you want to?
Jan, can you stand here?
No, I don't have any discussion.
Do, uh, I need to make a motion to, uh, hiring a utility in, uh, department employee. Uh, he is BJ, I don't see him anywhere.
He loves us.
You did?
Yes.
All right, anyway, uh, do I have any discussion on it?
Sorry, what was this last name? Thank you.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we, uh, hire Doris Colvin, uh, as a utilities worker, at the pay rate of fifteen dollars an hour, with, uh, a probationary period of three months.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Can you give him a start date?
Give him one. Give him one.
Start tomorrow?
All right, do I have a vote? You know, it's been seconded.
I didn't hear that, thank you. Yes.
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 Okay. All right, then we've got a new, uh, utility employee named DJ. Now, we're gonna...
If you say we're still skipping E?
We have to, we have, yeah, we have, no action on that.
Okay. We're gonna have no action on, uh, E in the new business. Any discussions?
Nine A?
Uh, nine A is consultation with attorney regarding legal remedies for withholding passwords and access codes to city hardware, software, document locations by former secretary. Any discussions? Do I have a second on it?
Second on it? What's the motive?
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, hire the attorney to give us the information needed and to, um, what our, what our options are for getting this information.
Do I have a second? One second. Uh, vote. Jan? DJ next? Jan? I'm staying.
I'm staying.
Do I have a motion, uh, do I have? I was gonna make a motion.
So, actually, yes, adjourned.
Thank you. Does anybody want to make an emotion to adjourn?
I'm making motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Three?
Aye.
Thank y'all.
Hey, for some reason, she, she didn't actually think about it.
I'm not, I'm not concerned about any of it at all.
We are adjourned at nine fifteen today.
Seriously, not concerned about one thing, because I already done, I've got my party. Janice?